So, as President Council will be taking his place. First, let's have a call to work. And we'll start with Pledgeable Agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see that? Thank you. Do you really want to start a roll call? Liz?
Sorry. We keep you up for this train. Dixon?
Here.
Kyle? Steven?
Here.
Fire?
Here.
Yeah, here.
Here.
Alright, we have approval of minutes on last month.
I make a motion that we dispense with a reading of the minutes approved as presented.
First of all, I, or anybody second that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any visitors here this evening that wants to address council?
My name is Keith White. Is this the time and place?
Yes, this is the time and place.
Oh my goodness, right now, Charlotte. I was prepared, I thought there might be a short meeting. For just a couple of minutes. I can gather my...
While he's getting his things together, this is Keith White. He's a restaurant owner, a local restaurant owner, and he's working on some things that will be a major benefit, I believe, to our community. He's not going to be within our community right away, but we definitely are looking forward to what he's proposing and how it's going to add some flavor and some options to our area. Mayor and I spoke with him and his family on Friday, and he had some really wonderful things to tell us. He wanted to make a short presentation to council, just to give you some information about what he's planning.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. I brought a half a dozen copies of Beverly Cafe restaurant menus to share a motion, and then another half dozen copies, the second top, but one says Beverly Barbecue Restaurant. And just to give them an apology if I didn't bring enough for everyone. Keith White is an original Buckeye. Papa's from Cleveland, mom's from Cincinnati. Family owns five homes in Columbus, Ohio. And I'm here in Cambridge for the specific reason to find a location for Beverly Barbecue Restaurant. While I was doing my build-out on South Gate Parkway in the Parkway Center strip mall across the street from Pizza Hut, those of you that are familiar with the South Gate Parkway area of Cambridge, a realtor called me about a month ago and says, Keith, there's a restaurant for sale. We know you're in the restaurant business. Can you help us with this? It's on Glen Highway. What? Okay. The gentleman is older, he's ill, the restaurant has been failing, and it's not the cutest thing on the block, but I got it for a very, very, very good price. And then met with Charlotte and Mayor Essex Friday, was very encouraged by some Jeff, Daily Jeff news article that was in your paper, March the 12th, talking about Jim LeNeer? Leer?
Leonard.
Is that you?
That's me. Depends what you have to say.
Jim and some other dignitaries asking for the village to do the best they can, I believe, to move forward with retail and restaurants. Charlotte gave me a quick, kind of, support that you want to support your college, you want to support your town, you want to have places to take the parents of the students, and Charlotte mentioned the after-school sports activities that not only take place at the high school and your local schools, but of course in the campus. So, my proposal, I'm going to take over what is now called the Country Corner Restaurant, just 2.5 miles out of your community, well, out of the city limits, because I really consider it the community, because I have another obligation to Cambridge, but I wanted to make an obligation and commitment to New Concord. And do whatever I can, as I explained to Charlotte and the mayor, to lift the economic development program that I've read in your article. You better do your part. I'm stepping in for my part in it, toss a lot of them. I'm going to improve the parking lot. I'm going to improve the building itself. As you can see, I have big plans for the menu. I'm going to be open until 8, 9 o'clock at night. Give you some better staffing. But pictures show you that I'm forty and a half decades of restaurant management. Boy knows what it's doing. Okay? So, if you can, please, consider this a move for me to do everything I can to help lift your economic development and be one of the people that contribute to your effort to improve the things that go on here and let me bring you a really, really good restaurant. Okay? So, questions, anyone? That's all I got to say, Charlotte, I have five minutes. The only thing I want back is the pictures.
Great pictures.
Give back my pictures. The menus are forgiven, please. Keep, and keep in mind, did you see, the only thing else I was going to mention, did you see the first page of Beverly Cafe menu? That second paragraph, hopefully that grabbed your eye as far as Keith giving back immediately to your community. Responders, law enforcement, seen persons over sixty years old, and what else did I have? Oh, active duty, active duty military, not veterans. I'm a veteran, there's too many of us. Active duty military, they are serving right now, wearing the uniform that protects our country and protects lives. Six fifty percent discount, day and night, when you walk in the door. That's Keith White giving back. Okay? So I want my parking lot fully to EMS drivers, and Charlotte says she does not want the police department parked at my restaurant. Mayor mentioned that also, he said, Keith, now wait a minute. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other visitors tonight? Okay, we'll move forward with some of our reports. Who's reporting? Is anybody reporting tonight on zoning?
Thank you.
Charlotte, did you have anything on zoning?
Um, nothing from my end, but it's ready for the council yet. I know Jim and I are working to bring the zoning updates. Once those are ready, we'll present those to the Planning Commission, but they just don't have time to get in at this month, so. But the chief's zoning report is in your pocket, and any questions, I think you can just forward to him and he can answer when he returns from training.
Chief Matt, you ready?
Okay, March 2019 statistics, we had two hundred and ninety calls for service for 2019 so far, we had seven hundred and eighteen calls for service, averaged about nine point four calls a day. We had forty traffic citations with sixty-six warnings. Two misdemeanor arrests, one felony case, zero warrants for us. Total citations for 2019, ninety-one, and total warnings, a hundred and fifty-six. And we done seventy-two business checks in the month of March. Our most common citations were speed, we had twenty-two speed violations, four plate violations, ten driving under suspensions, and they direct this month for some reason, I don't know the reason behind that, but we've seen an increase in those. Traffic control devices, two, and two others. Criminal charges, had zero drugs this month, so we had one of our felony cases, was a drug case, but for misdemeanor court, we didn't have any. Zero alcohol, we're flat out. Two protection order violations, zero. Crashes, six crashes here in the village, that's up a little bit, but this month too, and unusually, we had eight. Now for our police department, we just finished up our hurricane training, decided to do that, so we did that last week. Officer Trowden, Officer Young finished up their drug patrol course, everybody's certified in that now, except Officer Gray, since he's new, we'll get him certified. And getting ready to find and who can get both of them sent to A-Bro, of course, and we're ready to be A-Bro certified. Other than that, we're just working on the canine stuff and some other events like the librerio and things like that. As long as we have the helmets to accommodate it, that'll be scheduled for next month, so we'll answer that here Friday, next week, with the, and stuff like that, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? We'll move on to our fire report.
We had an unusually slow month, eighty calls for service, sixty-eight of them being EMS, or twelve of them being fired. Did recently have a fatal fire. We want to extend our condolences to the family members that had to go through that. Calls have gone up, they're steadily increasing for this month. We are on track to be back on normal. I got a couple guys out for training right now.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Will we move on?
Why are they standing out there at that fatality? Did you guys try to get the oxygen out and you wouldn't come?
That is what, on the initial 911 call, that's what the dispatcher had.
He called it in, didn't he?
Yeah. And by the time we got up there, there was nothing more that we could do, we did everything that we could.
That's too bad. And you know the thing, that is a tough thing, actually talked to the sun last night, it was, that's a tough thing.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, as far as the mayor's report, I don't see anything, so we're going to bypass that. And move on to our fiscal officer.
Thank you. The funding for balance at the end of March was one million thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Of that, they have a hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred reserved for the Garland Real Estate TIP reimbursement, and a hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred reserved for our fire engine collision in terms of. Our canine unit fund is sitting at eleven thousand five hundred. And we received our first half real estate settlement from the county auditor. All of March expenses were routine budgeted expenditures, and I'm working on the first quarter financial comparisons to prepare and present to our next finance meeting. Any questions?
Where did you say you served from the fire truck?
We received an insurance fine check of a hundred and ninety-five five. So when you look at the fund status and you look at the fire department's two hundred and twenty thousand.
They don't really have that.
Right. I just wanted to...
That's what I thought, I wanted to make, I used to thought that was an enormous amount of money for a fire department, when they're asking for more money.
That's correct. So we need to just remember a hundred and ninety-five five.
I thought that's what you meant, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, we'll move on to administrative report, I wanted to go back for a place chief. Seen a lot of positive comments about the new car. Beautiful new car.
Yep, it's nice.
And got it on the road, looks like everything's going well with it?
Yep. Yep. Sergeant Dawson drives it the most.
Yeah, that's what he said.
It's hard to read, you know, old dog, new truck, I mean, they like that old car, they just, so that's what we generally do, we want to keep two in one, that way we're rotating them, not all we're driving, so.
You said we did take one off the road, didn't we?
Yep. Yep, this gives them back, so.
Alright, just wanted to give that comment, because I have heard a lot of positive comments, so. Okay, administrative, Charlotte, do you have your report done?
Very well. Pardon phone noise, the buzzing back here is our, our new phones, we're doing some testing, and the IT folks are working with the phone provider to make sure that everything's going to work the way that it should work, we don't have any issues before everything gets installed. So they've been down here buzzing for a while, and they're doing their remote testing and things, but they should be up and running in the next few days to a week. Joy's been putting a lot of time in making sure that everything gets coordinated, so thank you for that. As far as our water and wastewater plans go, our water production for the month of March was seven million three hundred and forty-seven thousand gallons. Wastewater flows were eleven million seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand gallons. So we did have some high rain events, but not as much as we had previously this winter, so the rain and the extra flow is coming down, that's good, we're still going to be monitoring everything. Plant superintendent and I have been working with CT Consulting, our water and wastewater engineers, to complete the Sinotoxin General Plan. As you recall, that is the required document from the Ohio EPA for our algae monitoring in our upper and lower reservoirs. That should be completed and submitted by the April 23 deadline, so we should be in compliance on that end. I've actually received the draft copy, so there will be the conference calling with the engineers soon, to make sure everything's ready to go. As far as safety is concerned, we've been working with the Bureau of Workers' Compensation to do some safety site visits for our water plant and for our operations garage. Those were done last week, and we should be getting a report back from BWC here in the next week or two, and then we can start addressing some of the concerns that they may have. Also, working to do some trainings, both through video trainings and onsite trainings, we'll be developing those throughout the year, and trying to get on a regular program for that. Our operations department, the staff have been patching potholes and fixing various road concerns throughout the village. We've leveled out the tree lawn and removed large tree roots in front of various funeral home and the post office and the tree lawn there, after removing a large dead tree. After getting all the old roots out, we were able to put in our new tree, and it's a wildfire maple, we can put a little further ice there. We have developed a draft street improvement list, it's not final, we're still working on it. We have a meeting with our paving contractor next week to look at some things and get some opinions, so hopefully we'll have something to do with the infrastructure committee soon on what we're looking to do in terms of our street improvement program in 2019. We have a recycling education session coming up that is going to be co-hosted with the village and Kimball as part of our recycling and refuse contract with them. They will be coming here on Thursday, the 11th, at 5:30, over in the connected upper firehouse. It's right next to Village Hall on Layton Drive, it opens up on the Layton Drive, it's called the Upper Firehouse, but it's literally connected to Village Hall, it's where we house our medics and EMS vehicles. So the fire department has graciously allowed us to utilize that space to let people come in. Our Kimball representative, Julie Monroy, will be here, she'll be explaining proper recycling techniques, acceptable materials, and the materials that aren't acceptable, and they'll be bringing some examples, so people can pick them up and look at them and understand why this certain type of item is not acceptable in their recycling plant versus this other type. So it'll be a good conversation, some good question and answer, and we hope that everyone is able to come out and have their concerns on recycling addressed, and then if this seems to be something that people are interested, we may be doing another one again later on this spring, at another time that works for everyone. We also have our 2019 sidewalk program, we're trying to come up with our list of potential sidewalk programs to utilize the funds that we have available for our sidewalks. I'm encouraging anyone who has a sidewalk, public sidewalk out front of their property, who is identified that as maybe being in need, please contact the village, let us know, we'll take a look at it and see if it's something, a good candidate for decide what program this year. And then we'll move forward with that and take that to the infrastructure committee for further review and especially. And that's all I have this evening, but are there any questions that we haven't got answered?
You said we replaced the trees in front of the post office and the funeral home. We have one, I guess, on its way for beside the pharmacy in front of Jerry Gibson's place.
We do have, we do have that one, it hasn't been replaced already, we do have it. And then there should be another at the far west end of town, we still have to level out a tree lawn there as well.
Any other questions for Charlotte, before we move on? Special projects manager report, Jim, you got anything to report?
No, it was kind of a slower month this, this past month. I did it in the report, you see, I did list the total number of hours, so that'll be a running tally just to keep track, but up in the report, Charlotte already mentioned the zoning ordinance, so hopefully that'll be in the planning commission's hands next month. Any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Alright, so we move forward, I was not at the infrastructure meeting today, but I guess you're going to...
I'll go back in first. Yes, this was actually a joint infrastructure and finance meeting, and so actually, it's alright, we'll just go through all, both committees at the same time, so you don't have to hear me twice. So, as Robert mentioned, we discussed a, getting into CT consultants, who are engineers, who submitted a proposal to the village to start looking at South Liberty Road and that tricky area we've discussed before with the crossing over the railroad tracks and also that section of Garland. And really, the next step in that process, which is going to be a long one and have a lot of different things to talk about, is really looking at what's feasible there, what can we do? And so, the next step would be to actually talk with our engineers and hire them to do a plan, in which they would talk about the feasibility of how we deal with that crossing, and also work possibly with Garland as well at the upper end of that, near AD3, to see how those roads would connect with what they're doing. So it's, it's a general plan of recommendations of what we can do, and so what we're looking at with this resolution is hire them to just do that step, and then we can talk about what comes after that. So we're looking both at the infrastructure of the road itself, and also, finance looked at the paying for this first step with contract with CT Consulting. So, from the finance perspective, Steve and I were both there, and so we agreed that we'd run then Resolution 419-2 as per the finance committee. I believe I was the only member of the infrastructure committee that was left, so if either member has any questions about it, and Charlotte can probably explain more than I can about what's going on within.
So they're going to do all the legwork and make sure that it's a good idea? Give us the best...
Give us some ideas of what's possible, is that right?
Right, so basically, we've kind of keep this around, tried to figure out what would be, what would make the most sense in terms of an alternate crossing, knowing that the bridge is in the disrepair that it is in, and the intensive capital improvements that it would take to make it safe again. We've looked at a crossing area possibly extending across the railroad tracks at Layton Road. Does that make sense? One of the things that the engineering can look at is that conversation with the railroad from a safety perspective, are there any major concerns that can't be mitigated from the railroad's perspective? We're going to work with the Ohio Rail Development Commission and have some good conversations on that end. They'll also look at the south end, south of Layton to understand the geography, what are the challenges with that in our proposed route for the road? Are there any major concerns, any environmental concerns that we need to address, that anything like that would eventually cost some extra dollars? So what are we looking at? They'll be able to provide us some good options. They'll also be discussing the proposed plans with Garland Commons on their realignment of South Liberty Road, to make sure that that fixes, fits in with the way that we need to have the curves in the road and the, you know, way that it will work, is it going to be wide enough to handle the traffic flow that we're expecting? Is the existing section of Layton on this end, is it strong enough to handle that? Do we need to do any improvements? So they'll be pretty comprehensive in terms of what they look at, and then just, as Aaron said, provide us with some options and give us some, probably make us ask more questions, but there'll be more informed questions on, okay, what do we do next? What are our next steps? What are we looking at in terms of cost? And we're not going to have it down to the penny, but we might get some, some good estimates, and who said we like this, we don't like this, so it'll be good.
I'm just going to see some progress moving forward.
There's nothing that's going on with the road itself, to be clear, but it's all in the planning stages, and it's the next step that we need to take.
Absolutely.
Alright, so following the finance report, my is in infrastructure also, heard from Julie Ward, who is the Rural Communities Assistance Partnership Representative, who's been working with Charlotte, the village, especially with water department, on a water systems assessment manage program, which is required by EPA, and we'll have our five annual or every other year review with the EPA coming up the end of this year, and it's one of those requirements that we need to have. This is actually our second meeting we've had with Julie, she met with, I believe, most of council in the fall, to talk about really what this plan is all about, and then she came back because there had been some updates and we're getting closer to her actually completing a report for us. And so that's one of the next steps. Another step is meeting as a whole council to go over everything, because there were only three of us at the meeting today, we felt like we didn't want to make final decisions on anything until we could talk and have everybody in the room. But some of the next steps will be kind of education on how much our water costs to produce, and the types of infrastructure and the types of funds we need to have available to make sure that our water is clean and properly getting to everybody in those magical closets that just run all the time. And to do that, part of it is, you know, we have to pay our annual expenses, but we also have to be cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of costs that are for projects that are very large and are time-consuming, but also will last us for decades. And so we want to make sure we also have the funds to do that. So we will, as I said, have another meeting with the whole council before we talk about any major next steps, but we did ask Julie to continue with the reports that we have a draft of that report, ready to look at, like the next council meeting or a little bit after.
We'd like to have the May council, we'd like to pull this committee of the whole together for May 13th council meeting, if possible, I'll do a poll with some times and dates, and we'll see if we can't find something to put on the calendar. If we can't get it done before the 13th, that's okay, you'll at least get Julie's report and be able to have that in preparation for the June meeting. So between May, May or June, we'll have something and hopefully be able to move forward.
So infrastructure was looking at, and that's the ultimate, and finance was looking at some of the rates and the ideas of budgeting, we really look at a decade's worth of budgeting going to the board, which is a lot when you're thinking about water. So more will come on that, definitely, in the future. But we don't have any legislation to think to do that, any of that. There are two other pieces of legislation that are very short and kind of easy, and Lynn mentioned a little bit about them. One has to do with updating our appropriations because of some tax money that came in, that we didn't put in the final appropriations we approved last month, but we need to update. And so that's ordinance F419-1. And so really, it's, it's basic accounting in the village, and nothing to really be worried about, but we need to be better to answer questions on that, but the committee does support that one. And on also, Resolution 419-3, which is another general moving of money into our incentive district debt TIP fund, a very little amount, but just to cover some of our expenses, and again, that was anticipated with the budget, but we didn't have the resolution to move forward. Is there anything else to... I believe those are all the pieces for me, so. Finance and infrastructure.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for Aaron? Alright, thanks again. We'll move forward to policy.
Policy committee met on April 1st, and all council members, fortunately, were in attendance to that. We had some discussion prior to the policy committee, about our rules for council, but we listened to a presentation from the USI group on the PEP program, the Public Enidies Pool of Ohio, and it's an OBL liability and property insurance change for the village. There was a lot of discussion, we discussed some of the pros for it on a three-year guarantee break for the village, a loss control manager to assist the village in limiting losses. They currently have 550 members in Ohio, worth 18.5 million in premiums coming in annually. They specialize in ensuring villages, cities, municipalities, so we looked at that stuff. They will provide training in areas of weakness for our village and help us improve areas free of charge. They give us a true property valuation, and it appears what we looked at to be cheaper and to be better coverage. Some of the questions we had was how many bids did we get from other companies, and we talked about that, and... talked about that and Charlotte addressed those for us. Um, we have, and I reached out to some, some different cities and municipalities and we've talked to and I know other council members have too, and the feedback has been very positive. Um, it seems to be a very good choice for the village and I think, uh, as council as a whole, we have some reservations, some questions in our mind still, I think, but overall, I think the feeling is that, uh, we should move forward with the resolution that's presented tonight, it's Resolution fourteen, uh, four nineteen-one. And I think from the feedback that I've gotten from everybody, we're comfortable in renewing the three-year contract, so I would recommend that from the policy committee.
Just to, to be clear, it's not a three-year contract, it's, it's a three-year rate guarantee.
Three-year rate guarantee?
Yes.
So it's a one-year contract?
It's a one-year and, and they, they asked us one-year membership and it didn't really make sense for us to leave mid-year anyway, um, that, that would actually hurt us budgetarily, but yeah, one-year and then we can renew with them or we can look elsewhere if we are not satisfied.
That's even better. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for, for moving forward? Thank you very much. Uh, safety committee, uh, Jim's not here, but he did not be, so there's nothing that's reported, alright. Then we can move forward with, uh, old business then, we have ordinance J four nineteen-one, an ordinance establishing council orders for the village of New Concord, this will be the third reading, uh, this is the one that we met on, discussed in length the other day, and I believe we were, we were all in favor of tabling this for now.
First to host them.
Do I hear them?
I'm gonna make a motion that we tabled, uh, the third reading, the ordinance J four nineteen dash one.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will table this till we have a chance to, uh, we work a little bit harder or make some adjustments, get it checked out. We wanted, uh, Scott to take a look at it, make sure that the stuff that we have in it is what we should have and, um, we build it, everything is in there, it needs to be, we just want to make sure it's worded right and is actually the way, uh, that it's supposed to be written.
Scott, for you and Charlotte, I'm still receiving feedback from council members of some corrections that we want to look at making before I'll submit that final draft to Charlotte to get to you or submit to you too, just look at, we just want to make sure when we do, we don't, as council, do something that we can't enforce or do something illegal to put ourselves in a bad position and that's a concern just from our Matt. Uh, we are very close to a finished product.
Yeah, we had a very productive meeting.
We had a very productive meeting and I, and I thank all, all of our council for working hard on it and their contribution to it, so, um, but I think we got a good working document and, and we should be able to go forward at, at next month's council meeting. So I'm a little happy with that. Thank you.
So we will table ordinance J four nineteen-one. Moving forward to new business, we have ordinance F four nineteen-one and ordinance, uh, amending ordinance F three nineteen-one, in order to appropriate additional funds for the village of New Concord, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and declaring emergency.
I'm declaring emergency.
I'll second that. Good, just by Erin, second by Steve. Uh, roll call.
Steven, yes. Buden.
Yes.
Fire.
Yes.
Terms. Yep.
Okay. Um, Resolution four, whoops, I'm sorry. Yep, now, um, on the ordinance.
I move on the ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, just by Steve, second by Erin.
Buden.
Yes.
Steven, yes. Fire.
Yes.
Terms. Yes.
So ordinance F four nineteen-one passes on emergency. Resolution four nineteen-one, a resolution accepting the premiums for various automobiles, liability and property insurance coverages proposed by the Public Entities Pool of Ohio through USI Insurance Services for the village of New Concord, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Okay, first by Buden.
Go ahead, she must pay. You did it. Second.
Second by Buden.
Fire.
Yes.
Buden.
Yes.
Steven, yes. Terms. Yes.
Okay, so passing on emergency and, uh, I have a resolution?
So moving to resolution. Second.
Buden.
Yes.
Fire.
Yes.
Steven, yes. Terms. Yes.
Okay, so Resolution four nineteen-one passes on an emergency and we'll move on to Resolution four nineteen-two, a resolution for the village administrator to enter into contract with CT Consultants for the Liberty Road, realignment feasibility study and declaring an emergency.
Some will declare emergency. Second.
Okay, just the second, go ahead.
Steven, yes. Terms. Yep. Fire.
Yes.
And on the resolution?
So moving on to resolution. Second.
And Steve.
Terms. Yes. Steven, yes. Fire.
Yes.
So Resolution four nineteen-two passes and final Resolution four nineteen-three, a resolution transferring various sums of money in the year of twenty nineteen budget for various funds listed here in, to funds listed and to declare an emergency.
So moving on to emergency.
I'll second.
And Steven?
Buden.
Yes.
Steven, yes. Fire.
Yes.
Terms.
And the resolution?
Some moved in the resolution.
Second.
Steven, yes. Buden.
Yes.
Fire.
Yes.
Terms. Yes.
So Resolution four nineteen-three also passes. Uh, we have approval for the, for the bills.
Move that we pay the bills?
Second. Second by fire. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, guess we will pay our bills this month. And announcements.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Uh, the only announcements we have left then was, uh, Mark O'Brien, Speaker of the New Concord Community, uh, responds to opioid addiction, will meet Tuesday, April ninth at six-thirty in the John Glenn High School cafeteria for a presentation. Uh, again, there's a reminder that our recycling education section will be Thursday, April eleventh, in our upper firehouse up here and that starts at five-thirty. Uh, the planning commission that was scheduled for Thursday, April eighteenth, has been canceled because there's nothing on the agenda. Uh, there's also a reminder that Let's Pick It Up New Concord will be Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from nine to eleven, uh, at the Stormont Park and following the trash pickup will be a light lunch, I believe, of hot dogs, uh, chips and, and what have you. So come, help pick up some trash, beautify New Concord and have a hot dog. Uh, our Drug Takeback will be Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from ten to two, right here at New Concord Village Hall.
Can I add to that, Rob?
Sure.
We can just give people, uh, this year, to help us out, just put your pills like in a Ziploc bag and then just bring them in, we can dispose of them, or you can just bring them in like that with a bag and we can dispose of the bottle for you, but we can't put the pill bottles in, we take and rotate back, so we have to weigh the pills separate, so it's just easier that way. Yep, we hear you.
This is legal medication you're talking about.
Yes.
I thought you guys were collecting heroin.
No, I'm more than unused medications. No sharps or no like...
I'd like to see you for clarifying. Alright, and our final announcement with our next village council meeting will be Monday, May thirteenth at six-thirty, right here. Anybody else have any, uh, anything to add, any questions or comments before we adjourn?
Hey, you guys, again, one more?
Yes.
Each one of you, I believe, have my business card. It would be so helpful for me, as I go forward to my lenders, by the end of this week, to have feedback from the village. Give me your questions, your ideas, if you think this is a good idea, if you have suggestions for me, if you can lend your support, please introduce yourself, because I know you and your titles and your various positions in this wonderful community, but you have my email address, I'll shoot everyone's using email. Could you give me a letter of support, if you do indeed support me and like Jim said, if you don't support me, don't write me up. Your feedback, what you think of this project of mine, it would be so helpful if you guys would let me know what you think. A little letter from Charlotte, too.
Alright, then, if there's nothing else, do I have a motion for adjournment? Uh, we got it first from Bob, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, goodnight.
Thank you all.